We're going to call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you please take roll call?
Absolutely. Councilmember Baldino.
Here.
Councilmember Giroux.
Here.
Councilmember Purstuck.
Here.
Mayor Protem Pimental.
Here.
Mayor Boyle.
Here. Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, we're going to start with the invocation led by Pastor Jonathan Elmore of the Bridge Church. Following that, we'll have the pledge allegiance led by Councilmember Baldino. Please rise.
As always, just wanted to thank you for giving us the time to just pray over our city. So yeah, like to open us in prayer. Lord, thank you for this council, Lord, our public servants here in El Segundo. We just pray a covering of wisdom, clarity with their decision-making today, God. And Lord, we just thank you for our teachers, our firefighters, police force, God, that protect our city and invest in the next generation with these students, Lord. And I pray specifically for the families in El Segundo. Just I pray that you would protect these kids as they continue to grow and learn and become full adults to give back to our community, Lord. We love you, God. Be with us in this time. You know, your prayer, amen.
All right, place your hand in the heart, ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we've got a bunch of special presentations and got a bunch of kids outside that have accomplished some amazing things. So hopefully, oh, I see Mrs. Jennings is bringing them in, I believe. All right, we're going to start up with a very important announcement, and Councilmember Purstuck's going to read this one.
Yeah, so we're excited to say thank you and to Dr. Melissa Moore, superintendent of El Segundo Unified School District. She's been at the school district for 10 years and has done amazing things and has been a partner to the city, a partner to all of us individually, and a friend. And she has really led the change in our school district and really set us for new heights. And I just can't thank her enough for everything she has done for our students and our community. So we want to honor Dr. Melissa Moore. Does anyone want to say anything else before I bring her up?
The 10 years that you served at our school district were crazy, right? We went through COVID, there was a lot of things. You kept a level of professionalism. You were easy to communicate with, and I want to thank you because we trust you with our children, our most valuable resource. And I just want to thank you for the service and dedication you've given to our small town.
Thank you, Councilmember Baldino. Anyone else? I would like to say you're a shining example, not only of incredible school leadership, but also amazing Trojans. So thank you very much, Dr. Moore, for you've been a great partner to the city. And having served on the City and Schools Subcommittee, I think for the entire time, I've been up here in council since, I think, 2016. We've done some amazing things together. We've had some hard conversations, and they've come out with great end results, thanks to you and the school board leadership. So thank you for all your years of service. Much appreciated.
So Dr. Moore, would you like to come up and say a few words, and then we'll give you a plaque?
I have to keep my motions in check. It has been my express honor to serve this school district, and I am extremely touched by the council's show of honoring me this evening. El Segundo Unified School District serves as a shining example of excellence in public education. And I hope all of the families who attend our schools realize what a gift it is to live in this community. I spoke to Dr. Jason Johnson this afternoon and told him, you better take good care because this is a very special place. And I said, I know everybody says that about that place, but I said, this is a very special place. So it doesn't happen by one individual. It happens by an entire team. And so I have been blessed to have amazing classified staff, talented teachers, hardworking and dedicated site administrators, and a rock star cabinet team. So and for all of us, I have four past and present board members here. Dr. Bill Watkins was one of the original five who hired me 10 years ago, and I will always be grateful to those folks who have given me that opportunity. And then, of course, President Beachley and members Wheaton and Glenn are here as well. So I have great support with my school board, just as the city manager gets great support from the city council. So thank you for this honor. I am truly touched. A lot of your children have attended our schools, and it's just been a wonderful partnership, working with the city and the school district to accomplish great things together. So thank you.
Thank you. Let's do a photo. Should we do a photo, Dr. Moore?
Yeah, but real quick, so Melissa's not going very far. She's actually joining the ed board. So she'll be joining us to help keep an eye on what's going on at the schools and help raise funds for the schools.
Great.
Oh, way better.
Excuse me.
I'm sorry, so we're going to sneak in here.
All right, couple for me.
Here we go, guys. And one more. Thank you so much. Great. Councilmember Baldino's got another announcement as well.
All right, it's my great honor to read this proclamation about National Public Works Week. We depend on our Public Works Department almost every day. They are incredibly responsive, and I couldn't be more proud of the work that they do. Therefore, whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of the vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of El Segundo. And whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated effort of public works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, drainage systems, water supply, water treatment and distribution systems, sanitary sewer collection systems, solid waste collection systems, maintenance of public buildings and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for citizens, civic leaders, and the children in El Segundo to gain knowledge of and maintain an ongoing interest in the understanding of the importance of public works and public work programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year 2024 marks the 64th Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association slash Canadian Public Work Association. Now, therefore, the mayor and members of the city council of the city of El Segundo hereby designate the week of May 19 through 25th, 2024, as National Public Works Week and urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Work Association slash Canadian Public Works Association and government agencies and activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protect our national health, safety, and quality of life. And we have Mr. Patrick Graham, one of our fantastic street maintenance workers, who's going to accept this award. Mr. Graham, do you want to come on up? Bring them all up, please.
Thank you, guys. I mean, oftentimes, we feel undervalued or underappreciated, but it's small, you know, gestures like this, they go a long way to helping the public work staff do what we do. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. We've got to work on that. Often is not good. We've got to work on the often appreciated, not underappreciated. So thank you for that. Thank you for being here. Yeah. Let's do a photo. If we could go a little further back. Thank you so much. We can find a spot for you. Come on. Director here. All right, here we go, everybody. And one, two, and one more. And one more. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you, Glenn. Thank you again.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, whereas Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month is observed nationwide throughout the month of May in recognition of the positive influence and numerous contributions of our Asian American Pacific Islander communities in our state and country. And whereas Asian American and Pacific Islander visit, work, and live in El Segundo and have contributed to our city's rich history, culture, economy, and public service. And whereas we are reminded that we must celebrate our diversity and our differences as they make us a richer community, and we celebrate the importance of inclusion to building a more diverse, equitable, and inclusive future for El Segundo. And whereas we recognize and confront racism and hate of all kinds against Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders and recognize the structural discrimination, prejudice, and injustice experienced by the AAPI community and the increased levels of harassment, discrimination, and violence perpetrated on the AAPI community due to bigotry. Now, therefore, on this 21st day of May 2024, the mayor and members of the city council do hereby proclaim the month of May 2024 as Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month and urge the community to join the celebration of the AAPI Heritage Month. Christabel.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm Christabel Villena, a 10-year resident, a parent of two El Segundo boys, and chair of the city's Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee. And I appreciate the council for recognizing AAPI Month, which I say for short. So there's a saying in my culture that loosely translates to small but mighty. So El Segundo as a city is small but mighty. The AAPI community here only makes up about 10, 11% of the residents, just 9% of LA County. But we make both large and small contributions in many ways. So we have leaders like Rob Bonta, who's our California's Attorney General. And even as a Giants fan, I feel pride when looking at the contributions of Dodgers manager Dave Roberts. And then there's our future, our next generation making history, like Max Baker, Louis Lappie, Colby Lee, and my son Lennon Salazar, who make up a quarter of the World Series championship team, who succeeded with the leadership of our coaches, including AAPI community member Eddie Lee. So just wanted to say thank you for recognizing us, for seeing us, and I look forward to working with you all and with the DEI committee to give visibility, opportunity, representation, and a voice to everyone, especially those who feel marginalized and unseen. So thanks again.
Thank you. Hey, what's the saying? The small but mighty.
I can't pronounce it properly, but small but mighty. I'll tell you later.
I'll give you later on that. And thank you very much. Let's give it a round of applause. Let's do a photo. Oh, yes, absolutely. Here we go. Couple photos here. And one more. Thank you so much. All right, next up, we have the proclamation for LGBTQ+ Pride Month, which is my pleasure to read. And the proclamation reads as following. Whereas the city of El Segundo cherishes the value and dignity of each person and recognizes and appreciates the importance of and the respect, equality, and freedom. And whereas all are welcomed in the city of El Segundo to live, work, and play, and every individual and family deserves a place to call home where they're safe, happy, and supported by friends, neighbors, and community leaders. And whereas the city of El Segundo denounces prejudice and unfair discrimination based on age, gender identity, gender expression, race, color, religion, marital status, national origin, sexual orientation, or physical attributes as an affront to our fundamental principles. And whereas the LGBTQ+ community has worked tirelessly for respect and equality and continues to celebrate authenticity, acceptance, and love. And whereas Pride Month began in June of 1969 on the one-year anniversary of the Stonewall uprising in New York City after LGBTQ+ and allied friends rose up and fought against harassment and discriminatory laws that have since been declared unconstitutional. And whereas the city of El Segundo celebrates and appreciates the cultural, civic, and economic contributions of the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer plus community, which strengthens our social welfare. And whereas it is imperative that people in our community, regardless of sexual orientation, gender identity, and gender expression, feel valued, safe, empowered, and supported by their peers and community leaders. Now, therefore, on this 21st day of May 2024, the mayor and members of the city council of the city of El Segundo, California hereby proclaim June 2024 as LGBTQ+ Pride Month in El Segundo and encourage all residents to celebrate the progress towards justice, equality, and liberty in the LGBTQ+ community and to join us in the fights that remain to be won. The city council of the city of El Segundo further calls upon residents and employees of El Segundo to observe June 2024 as LGBTQ+ Pride Month in honor of our LGBTQ+ residents, employees, and visitors and to the contributions they continue to make to our community. So on behalf of the city of El Segundo, we have Director of Parks and Rec, Ally Mancini, to accept this proclamation. Mrs. Mancini.
Yes. Honorable mayor and members of the council, as an openly LGBTQIA person and city staffer, I want to thank the city council for recognizing the many historical accomplishments of the LGBTQIA community. I'm very, very proud to work for a city that understands the importance of not just accepting diversity, but celebrating it and all of the work that the city council supports towards further expanding our efforts for equality and inclusion for all that live, work, and play here. This means a great deal to me and to the members of the community, and I want to thank you.
Thank you. Don't go too far. We'll do a photo. All right, there we go. Couple photos. Okay, everybody, here we go. One, and thank you. Thank you very much. All right, next up, we have Councilmember Giroux with recognition. Just wait for the noise. That's the hockey team. It's going to take a bit. I figured there'd be some lights and some walk-up music, but no. All right, we got everybody in? All right, this is a presentation. Actually, congratulations to the Junior Kings AA-14s for clinching first place in the California State Championship. I tell you, the amazing, the amount of championships and CIFs and titles and things that have come out of this community in the past less than a year has been incredible. What an outstanding accomplishment and an incredible achievement. Apparently, a thrilling game with the Junior Kings triumphing over St. Lawrence Steel with a score of four to three. Such dedication and teamwork have truly paid off. Wishing you all continued success on and off the ice. And I'm going to announce the players. I think you already have your accommodations there, but if you could probably have them step up here, or how do you want to do this? Up to the front? Up front? All right. All right. I hope I got your names right. I asked your parents. So if I'm wrong, it's because they were wrong, or I forgot. All right, Gus Alkire. Ty Binstein. Dominic Sisneros. Tyler Conti. Nicholas Dabalos. Barrett Donovan. William Dygaard. Jake Frankel. Wyatt Francis. Damon Harper. Seren Neeling. Campbell Leto. Luca Lira. Koa Mikalski. Tara Milhorne. Jason Pierce. Marco Tyke. Cale Thomassum. Head coach Ron TeShara. Assistant coach Eric Anderson. Assistant coach Terrence Neeling. There's a couple acronyms. I don't know what they mean. Ellery Pierce. And team rep and manager Daniel Donovan. Congratulations, coaches. Do you want to say anything up there about your team?
I just want to say thank you to the mayor and council members for providing us. Again, I know you guys, hopefully you heard me. Thanks again for the invite. Again, this team to go undefeated. I think that I was lucky enough to have this great group of kids to really let me coach them. And yeah, it was, as a coach, I know they always say nothing's like playing, but I never had so much fun being with this group. It was a joy to get to the rink every day, and, you know, I feel incredibly lucky. And just again, I'll never forget this group, and I look forward to seeing where they go from here. But again, thank you, boys, and Tara, especially everyone. Again, from the bottom of my heart, I really appreciate it being your coach, and it was a blast. So thank you again, and yeah, I look forward to seeing.
If the council, yeah, if the council stay back there, we get some kneeling in the front. All right. All right, all right. We'll see what we can do. We can't. Yeah, we can move it a little bit, but it's the XLR is there. But I got a super duper wide angle lens, so hopefully we can get everybody. Okay, here we go. Everybody, just look at the camera, couple shots. Okay? And stay there because I'd like you for your family to be able to take some photos, too. So please stay there. So please stay there.
A bunch of these kids, too, play in the El Segundo inline hockey league.
Any other parents? Nice job. There was a time when the inline hockey was out at Richmond with foam pads. Yes, it's come a long way. All right. Last, but certainly not least, we have another... As Councilmember Drew said, I mean, the hits just don't keep, like, they don't... What am I trying to say here? They keep on coming, thanks. Had so many champions here, it's amazing. And this one really is important to me because I was involved with AYSO, and one of the coaches, Lance is a neighbor of mine, and he and I coached together. We coached girls together many moons ago. And now to see your daughter grow up, Hannah, and the team, it's amazing what you guys have done. And you know what else is cool about this is AYSO realized, I don't know, maybe eight, 10 years ago nationally, that they were losing players to club teams, and they really need to ramp up their game. And so what's really exciting about this is these players are a travel team within AYSO Region 92. And they went on to actually win the entire Western State Championships, which is the first... It's hard enough, by the way, just to get through area and sectionals. I don't know if Lance, if I got that, I can't remember. You know, first you play here, then you go to Riverside. That's hard enough. I've coached those teams in Riverside, pouring rain for multiple days, and we wouldn't come home with the wins. And you guys have managed to do it. You've done, these ladies have done a tremendous job with the help of your coaches. So we're really excited for you and the future of soccer in this incredible city. Congratulations. Let's give them a big round of applause. And we have, we'll do the same thing as Councilmember Drew did. Well, when I announce your name, please come up, and they'll do a group presentation, and they'll have the coaches say a few words, okay? All right. First up, Brooke Lipshutz. Goalkeeper! Yeah, keeper. Olivia Torres. Riley Stebbins. Nikki Bernauer. Chloe Fitzgerald. Tiana Najjar. Tina, or Tiana? Tiana? Oh, I wasn't even, okay, not even the ballpark yet, close enough. Okay, thank you, I'll get it right. Riley Stewart. Hannah Bustrom. Madison Leach. Saya Elliott. Ashlyn Ward. Elenora Gormley. Delilah Perez. And Audrey Winkle. And then, let's not forget the coaches, Jordan Stewart, Brendan Gormley, and Lance Bustrom. You guys, congrats. Please say a few words, coaches.
First and only, I'm the only one? You guys are leaving me up here to hang. I could talk about this team for hours, but I know you guys are busy, and I've got other things to discuss, so I'll try and keep it short. I think oftentimes, when you have All-Star success, it's because you kind of catch lightning in a bottle. You have, you know, a month or so to work with a team. It clicks, you go, you perform, you either win or you lose, right? I think the difference with this team, and what makes me so proud, is that we go back, we've been working at this for a while, four or five years. We've been chipping away at it. I think in El Segundo in particular, every team starts with the idea that they want to try and beat Manhattan Beach, right? And get out of All-Stars.
Tell me you did that.
We did. But here's the thing. Not in our first go-around, though, so that's what makes this team so special. Different, I think, than most kind of All-Star teams that get put together. We had a run at it back when they were U-10. We didn't make it past Manhattan Beach. We came back, we worked, we got stronger. We went again at them at U-12, beat Manhattan Beach, I think, five-zip. Didn't realize North Redondo were gonna be there, and so they ended up taking it. That North Redondo team went on to win Western States and beat us in the final locally 3-2, so we knew we were that close. Came back U-14, right? Worked hard again, came back a third and final time. Ran through area play, I think combined score 27-zip, I think, was the... So we took care of two Manhattan Beach teams, North Redondo, South Redondo, Hawthorne. Went to section, kind of ran the table at section as well. Made it to the final where we played Alhambra, and unfortunately, we lost unfortunately in the final of section. Tough weekend, my kid Riley broke her leg in the first game, pouring down rain, like you said, the whole weekend, just brutal weather. So I think emotionally drained, physically drained. We went in against Alhambra, dropped the ball, they beat us, they took their chance, and they beat us. And then somehow, some way, we ended up with a wild card, which I've said for years, I've watched other teams get wild card opportunities, and there's been a part of me that's always kind of felt a little, hmm, I wouldn't really ever want a wild card. I want to win it the right way. Happily took the wild card. Happily took the wild card, went to Western States, where we then ran the table again, saw Alhambra in the final, flipped it the way we were supposed to. So I appreciate you guys taking the time to show appreciation to them and recognition for what they've done, because this is not a three, four-week thing. This has been going on for four years. And if there was ever a team that was deserving of some recognition into this group right here, so I appreciate you guys.
Couple of photos here, and stay afterward, stay, see your parents. Get the shots, too. All right, congratulations. It's amazing. And you beat Alhambra. I gotta wait for her. Very good, we got everybody now. All right, thank you very much. Couple of photos here, one more, all right. Now, parents, if you want to come up? I know I butchered the script last. I wasn't even close on the script, but... Say it, you want to say it?
So, real fast, one other thing about the travel team program that you were talking about, Drew, is there's seven to eight teams within El Segundo Region 92 now that are travel teams, and we have already seen some of those other ones come real close. So don't be surprised to be seeing a few more teams in the next few years that are a result of the travel team program taking on Western States Championships as well, so...
Awesome, thanks, Coach.
Right. High school stuff, too.
That's what I'm talking about, yeah. Bring it. How about that goalkeeper, 27-4 and 0 against, is what I heard? Is that incredible? Yeah, well done. That concludes our special presentations for the evening. So we're moving on to public communications. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone with this turning cards?
Yes, sir, we have three people so far. First up is Anya Goldstein.
Hi, good evening, councilmembers and executive staff. My name is Anya Goldstein, and I'm a resident homeowner, small business owner, and member of the Sweat Equity Alliance, our racial justice community group here in town. I learned today that you're planning to interview tomorrow exactly two community members for the two open seats on the DEI committee, and that one of these two candidates is Yodranka Draskovich. This is shocking to me because Ms. Draskovich ran for school board on an explicitly anti-DEI platform. I've emailed each of you the links to each of the following publicly available quotes. Ms. Draskovich has said, quote, "You can call it DEI, and it sounds nice and fluffy, inclusion, diversity. It aims to get equal access to all groups, and that sounds very good, but it's actually destructive." She also said, "If parents are not happy with any direction that the school is taking, be it CRT, DEI, or anything else, I invite you to vote for me." She said, "DEI claims to guarantee fair treatment and opportunity to all. Sounds nice, but what it aims to do is place race into every lesson and works to divide children." As you all know, the DEI committee was formed, and this is straight from the city's website, after, quote, "El Segundo residents shared their concerns about local racial diversity issues, inclusion, treatment by police, experiences at local schools, and other matters during several community rallies in response to the tragic murder of George Floyd in 2020." The purpose of the DEI committee, again, quoting the website, is, quote, "To inspire and activate efforts to integrate diversity, equity, and inclusion into city of El Segundo decisions, service delivery, and policies to improve the well-being of the entire El Segundo community." Ms. Draskovich is proudly anti-DEI. If you appoint her to this committee, you're sending the message once again that this council wants to hobble DEI efforts in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Goldstein.
Next up, John Pickaver.
Good evening, Mayor Boils, Mayor Proton Pimentel, city council, and city staff. My name is John Pickaver, and tonight, I'm here to comment on some of the developments that came out of the, excuse me, Strategic Planning Session on April 30th. Now, last year, at the 2023 Strategic Planning Session, you, the city council, discussed and revised the ordering and wording of the city's top five goals. The city's number-one goal for the past few years has been to, quote, "Enhance customer service, diversity, equity, and inclusion, and communication." At the 2023 Strategic Planning Session, you, the city council, all agreed to keep enhancing diversity, equity, and inclusion as part of the city's number-one goal. It then meant a lot to me to see that you went even further when Councilman Perstic said, quote, "And on the whole DEI component. It's not just, let's look at static and say, okay, tick a box, we've completed it. It's an infusion in a mindset, and I think the challenge is constantly pushing ourselves to ensure that it becomes a mindset." So it should come as no surprise that I was disappointed when at this year's planning session, you all agreed to remove the language "diversity, equity, and inclusion" language from goal number one. That goal was rewritten from "enhance customer service, diversity, equity, inclusion, and communication" to "deliver solution-oriented customer service and proactive communications to all members of the community." It would be one thing if the city had presented key progress indicators over the past year that showed progress toward the DEI goal, like they did for customer service and communication, but none were provided. Then, when it came time to see if the council wanted to stick with enhancing DEI as part of its top five goals this time around, Councilman Perstic, who last year again spoke about the importance of championing DEI as a mindset across city departments, said, "I do struggle with the word 'equity,' because what does that mean?" And then, by the end of the meeting, the diversity, equity, inclusion language was gone from the city's goal. I'd be lying if I said it wasn't disheartening to see a sitting council member ask what equity means after it's been a part of the city's number-one goal since 2021, and after the city installed a DEI committee the year prior in 2020. And look, I'm not here to shame anyone for not knowing what a certain term means, but I think we need to be more proactive in our efforts to understand words and terms like this, especially when they've been prioritized as top goals and initiatives for the city. I know it can be confusing, I mean, why equity and not equality? And here's a quick example. I've been coaching track and field for the last year, and we give everyone on the team running shoes. Equality would be giving everyone the same pair of running shoes, but some people pronate, or some people over-pronate, and they need a more supportive shoe. So they'll get a different shoe. That's what equity is, recognizing that everybody's needs are a little different and trying to meet that. And obviously, the stakes can be a lot higher than what running shoes you wear in the context of DEI, but it that helps illustrates the key differences between the two and why it's important for a city to approach policies and procedures in a way that is equitable for all. The school board and Superintendent Moore were here earlier tonight, and I think they do an excellent job of that on this front. One of the mantras they say a lot is, "Working to ensure all students feel seen, heard, and loved." That's what it's all about. These proclamations tonight for Pride and Asian Pacific Islander Heritage Month are representative of that, for sure. But they're only a start. Call it DEI, call it seen, heard, loved, whatever it is, just please don't lose the intention behind the words and terms when crafting and executing policy so that everyone can feel welcome here in El Segundo. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pickaver.
Next, we have Ryan Kogel.
Kyle.
Excuse me, wrong name.
Don't understand why I'm here. Ryan? Thank you. You guys probably know why I'm here, because I've been emailing you, and this is not as serious as the previous discussed matters, but I'm here to discuss the parking situation on Illinois. I wrote a little something. I came to talk about the parking situation on Illinois. That's repetitive of what I just said. I figured after all the emails we've exchanged, you deserve to see what I look like in person, though I apologize for that. "There's a unique frustration in driving home each night and seeing the parking that you're used to parking on have a two-hour..." Let me stick to what I wrote. "There's a unique frustration in driving home at the end of the day and realizing you can no longer park where you have been used to parking, and instead have to go to a different neighborhood. What compounds that is knowing that your old parking spots are not being used by anybody else, they're just sitting there bored. Nobody can park there now, at least not for more than two hours, and that includes overnight. In all of our emails, I haven't heard who's benefiting from this. As far as I know, nobody is. It's just a total loss all around. Even you unfortunately lose because you have to read emails from people like me all the time. So please repeal the pilot program or make the west side of Illinois open to parking for residents with permits. Thank you."
Thank you, sir. That's all for public comments. Okay, city manager, I think, is there a comment from the diocese that would like to address anything that was discussed before we turn over to the city manager?
I just throw in, goal one explicitly has the DEI language still in it, the strategic plan, I mean, we were explicit with that in the last meeting.
We never removed it.
No, I mean, we can review it, they're published online. I mean, it's still there.
Yeah.
It is still there. In fact, we'll be bringing the final version to the council for adoption, I think, next month. Yeah, I just want, the other half of, the last part of that conversation, at the meeting at the library, was explicitly to keep that in. So just have no fear.
Okay. Just for the record, Mr. Pickaver saying the minutes didn't reflect that. Mrs. Ross?
Yeah, that language was contemplated with the, what he read, but I think we ended up on leaving diversity, equity, and inclusion in, and I remember that because I was thinking that's not the greatest grammar, because we're saying, "Drive results-oriented customer service and diversity, equity, and inclusion, and communications."
It didn't flow, and so we were trying to make it flow.
Yeah, so we do have that language still in there, but it might be a little bit different, just so it flows.
Thank you, Mrs. Ross.
Just one thing, on the first comment, just, when it comes to CCVs, anyone can apply to be interviewed. It, I think there's certain, you know, you gotta live here, or work here, or be here, but in the end, anyone has the ability to apply for any commission they want. Does not not mean that you're going to be chosen for that commission, but we do have an open policy as far as who gets to interview. But thank you for your comments.
Thank you. City manager?
Yes, I may, just a comment on, from the third speaker about the permit, the preferential parking zone three program. We have received numerous emails regarding that program. As you know, we were gonna, the pilot program was gonna be in existence for a year. We reduced that to six months. We will be, we're taking in all of the feedback we're getting as we rule... We will be, we're taking in all of the feedback we're getting as we roll the program out. And in fact, the Police Department extended the grace period through the end of May. Initially, we were going to do that earlier, but we've extended that through the end of May for enforcing the two-hour parking restrictions. So we will be monitoring this and coming back, and if we have to come back sooner than six months, well, you know, whatever the council's desire, but right now, we're taking all the data in and we'll be presenting the results of the pilot program to you within that period of time.
Thank you, City Manager. All right. We are moving on to, by the way, thank you for coming in and expressing your comments and for the emails, all of you. Thank you. All right. Item A, procedural, oh, real quick order of business. We're going to move up. We have Mr. Lanyer volunteer for Park Vista Development Corp. We're going to move up item 23. That'll be right after consent.
Mr. Mayor, one last thing on public comment. Is there a messaging component? We certainly hear from people who are in the community, but there's other people who are in the parking zone who I don't think are as involved and necessarily know what's happening. Is there any public communication piece outward that we're doing? Just, you don't have to come up and describe it. Is there something we can point people to? Because we get...
Extension of the grace period that the city manager talked about has been posted on the city website and social media and Police Department website, and it's, all the emails I receive are responded to, so we are publicizing.
Oh, no, I just didn't know we have some older residents who aren't as active online, and I happen to run into one and get 20 good minutes of their input. I just didn't know if there was a way, are we, did it posting or, I mean, like actual putting things in the mail to them or a hard copy describing the program?
I took the liberty of forwarding a few of the emails to the individuals who did the petition and let them know what's going on, and they were shocked to see the reaction of some of the, some of the members of the neighborhood and their comments. So I have forwarded some of these emails, so at least they know what's going on.
I just meant to notify, so there's somebody who lives there, and all of a sudden they wake up, and there's two-hour parking that goes in, and they haven't been a party to the robust dialogue. Is there any way that we are letting them know?
Sure, we can do that. We can do some hard copy.
I think you're saying more traditional methods.
More traditional method of communication.
Thank you for that. Yes, we will make sure we do that.
And maybe we post something on the new signs.
Right.
You know, some type of flyer or who to contact.
That reminds me, do the employers in the area that are generating, typically generate a lot of parking with employees or tenants, are they aware? Have we communicated directly to some of the employers that have been affecting this zone? If not, we should consider that as well. Employees slash places of business with tenants.
Not directly, but we could do that. We could include that as part of the initiative. We can do that.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Sessun. Okay, so we have item A, procedural motions. Read all ordinances and resolutions on the agenda by title only. Do we have a motion to do so?
So moved.
Thank you. There's Drew with the first.
First second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Five zero. Thank you. Any polls on consent? Wow, okay. Do I have a motion to approve consent?
So moved.
First second.
Great. All those in favor?
I gotta get that in quick.
Five zero. Thank you. All right. We're going to move up item 23. Item 23 is a, "The El Segundo Cedar Citizens Housing Corporation Board Annual Report Update and Funding Request for Reserves." This is, Mr. Lanyer, thank you for your leadership here, having been a liaison with this committee. This is a really amazing asset that our predecessors had the vision to create with some tax surplus dollars many years ago. It was money well spent. Incredible. So thank you for your leadership and volunteering your time. Appreciate it.
It's my pleasure. Drew, you asked me to join this board in 2018, so it's been a fun six-year run so far.
Sorry about that.
No, no.
Is there an Ari Val Smith in there? She doesn't attend? Good.
I'm going to go through this quickly because there's no bad news. Just a background, senior living facility owned by the City of El Segundo, since built in 87, 97 units. Markets are, for new rentals, are pegged at 60% of market rate. Four units turnover per year. Approximately 65% of the tenants are not paying 50% of market rates. So what we're seeing is there are large numbers of tenants who have been there for many, many years. Little bit of background, rent increases, 1% to 2% have been passed annually in the last 15 years, except for two years. We are delighted to have Paul Chung, the City Finance Director, and I apologize if I screwed up your title, and Elias Assun, the Director of Public Works, working with us and the Cabman Group, in particular Neil Cabman, to figure out what needs to be spent when. And then, how does that work in terms of the budgets? And we are, we are very grateful for their partnership. We had a major plumbing project expected to happen in 22, 23, which has been pushed out to 23, 20, sorry, 2034 and 2033. This was at, working with Elias to figure out, okay, what has to happen when. That's about $1.3 million, so we've pushed it forward but added about 5% to it so that we cover for inflation, we hope. The good news, financially stable, came through COVID intact. The bad news, none. Challenges, I know, right? I usually come up here like beating you guys up. We have over $6 million for the projects identified in the replacement reserves report. That's developed by the city to be converged by 2035. Included in our forecast, 2% increase for all of our expenses, but we've changed water to 5% because we've been seeing that running higher, if you will. So here's the net of it. Park Vista, under current practices and plans and using the Senior Housing Fund 504, controlled by the city, not by us, will stay within the city finance recommended reserves until 2034 and then fall below recommended reserves. We're talking 10 years out, but you can change how this looks. And let me take you through how. I'll point you to line 63. No. So this is financials one, assumes a 2% cost CPI and $200,000 from the city alone in 2024. If you look moving further out, we come into the red in 2034. That is, in terms of the reserves. By the way, I believe that in the next few days, the next week or so, that the city is going to be looking at the total funding and that there is $200,000 that was, shall we say, gifted or moved into the 504 funds. We appreciate that, hope that that will pass on June 4th, and that you will continue to do so. Unless you continue to do so, though, we find ourselves in this situation. We're very grateful to Paul for having worked out some other options. Financials two, assumes a 2% CPI and $200,000 annually from the city. If you look at the bottom line, it's all black. So if the city continues to contribute $200,000 a year to the city-owned building or put it into the 504 funds, only place that's currently being used is for Park Vista, then all of our expenses will be covered. You may not like this math, but call it 100 units, $200,000 a year, that's $2,000 per resident per year, which, to me, if we're talking about it as our parents, grandparents, loved ones, cherished people in the community, doesn't seem to be too much to ask. So our request to the city is to add $200,000 per year to the 504 reserves to cover future needs and stay within reserve guidelines established by the city. If that is not something that is palatable to this council or you want to do in perpetuity, then we ask, what are the other options? But this is the best news we've had for a long time. That's it. Thank you very much.
Question for you. I know that when my mother got in, there was a two-and-a-half-year wait for her to get in there. What's the waitlist like now?
I think it's about a year, year and a half right now.
Hmm. It's actually better. Okay. And that's with the, because we raised rents. We gave, we gave you guys, I think, the authority to raise rents.
Yeah, so we have the authority to rent, raise rents 2% without coming to you. We can go higher. We choose not to because we look at, these are people who have been here. Let's just clarify, for current residents, we can go up 2%. And we know that there are a lot of people who've been in there for a long time, frankly, don't have a lot of money. What we have done, though, is increased the new people who are coming in up to 60% of market rate, and that has changed the formula, if you will, so that we are in better shape. The reality is that 4% moving out, four units moving out every year, sometimes more, brings in more revenue when new people come in at 60% of market rate.
Thank you. Any questions?
No, it's just, that's wonderful news. Thank you, and I'm glad that we've solved the plumbing issues and we're, that, this is very well done, because this is, this picture didn't look like this five years ago.
It certainly did not. And just to clarify, we haven't solved the plumbing issues. We pushed them out.
We pushed them out, yeah.
But if the City Council, this one in future, will continue adding $200,000 to the 504 funds, we should be in good shape.
Good.
So the $200,000 is already in the budget? Yes. Okay. That's my question, Paul.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And in 2033, the $204,000 we spend a year on the parking garage comes out of the budget because the lease will be up, so that it could roll over as a cost neutral to Park Vista, right?
I like your thinking.
Can you say it again?
So our $17,400 a month rent on the parking garage will cease in 2033, because that's when our 30-year lease is on that. So that times up with this. If we want, the $200,000 commitment can come off of the books and be replaced by like-for-like, and it'll be, it would be cost neutral to us.
Excellent. So we've got this year hopefully taken care of, so then nine more years, you know, trying to get ourselves in great shape for 2033, 2034, and beyond. Thank you for your...
For the plumbing, plumbingpalooza of 2034.
I talked, I looked to Elias for that.
Yeah, how did we get, that's the question I have. How did we extend another 10 years in the life of the plumbing? What changed for us?
Thanks.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so it's straightforward. The reserve study said this is what the normal life should be, and we had experts come in through Elias and his team to review what does need to change, what does need. And frankly, there were a number of items that got pushed out. So it's just a matter of, you think your dishwasher's going to last 10 years. Sometimes it lasts 15, sometimes it's 20. In this case, it's a more heavily used.
Got it. Thank you. Okay, so before, any further questions? Okay, before, we have the receiving file, of course, but also provide staff direction regarding the Senior Citizens Housing Corporation Board's request for an allocation of $200,000 per year to the Fund 504, which is the reserves to cover future needs at Park Vista and here to establish reserve guidelines. Would someone like to move approval or have further discussion?
I'd like to move approval, but I also want to recognize the committee that says these are volunteers who come, sit on this committee and really give, care about our seniors and want to make sure that we have a place for our seniors to live and have a great place to live. So just thank you to all of you for giving up your time and being committed to the city.
Thank you for that. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilman Perstic. So we have a first. Do we have a second?
Baldino seconds.
Great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five zero. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you also for moving me up.
Thank you. Okay, item 19, El Segundo Firefighters Association Amendment to the City Contributions for CalPERS Medical Premiums. We have our Director of HR, Rebecca Reddick.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the council. The item tonight before you is a successor memorandum of understanding or MOU between the city and the firefighters' union. The city and the association had a mutual interest in reaching an expeditious agreement, and that was to improve recruitment and retention in all ranks, which includes captains, medics, engineers, and firefighters. And with that, I'm pleased to share that we were able to reach an agreement in under one month. So with that, I'd just like to briefly go some of, go through some of the highlights of the new MOU. It is a four-year and one-month agreement, ending in June 30th of 2028. There is a slight increase to the paramedic incentive pay that was currently being received by fire captains, fire engineers, and firefighters with medic licenses. It is a flat-dollar amount that was 7.6% of base, which was increased to 8%, but it still remains a flat-dollar amount through the life of the contract. The biggest change there really is that this agreement includes paying paramedic incentive pay to people who are paramedics, which is a pretty common practice in other agencies with fire departments, and considering that there is a medic shortage right now, that will be something that will really help us retain and recruit medics in the future. The other item in here is the elimination of the education incentive pay. We had two tiers of education incentive, one for people that were deemed Pepperas under the CalPERS system, so that's people hired after January 1st of 2013, and that was under one system. And then people who are classics, people who were hired before 2013, they were paid different amounts for the education incentive. So eliminating the education incentive altogether and including the pay of bachelor's degree for captain for all ranks into base pay. So that will be included into base pay. There will be no separate extra educational incentive pay. That item there is valued at 3.2%. The next one are the cost of living adjustments. The cost of living adjustment, the first one, is not until July 1st of this year, and it is 5.3%. And then there are other cost of living adjustments effective July 1st of 2025, 26, and 27, and those are 3%, 2%, and 2% respectively. The health insurance increase, we have been trying to get all of our bargaining units on the same amounts for health insurance increase. Currently, the Firefighters Association is at $1,700 per month for CalPERS medical, so that would increase to $50 upon approval and adoption of the new contract, and then it would fall in line with all the other bargaining units, which is a $50 increase each year on January of 25, 26, 27, and 28. The other piece in here economically is a voluntary binding arbitration agreement. So in exchange for members signing a voluntary binding arbitration agreement, they can receive up to $10,000. It is paid in two installments, one payment of $5,000 upon signing of the agreement and then another payment 30 days after signing the agreement. And for people that are newly hired, this provision is also available to them on a voluntary basis. However, they are not eligible to participate in the program until after they successfully complete probation. There are three other items which are not financial necessarily, but they are important to mention. We have included, as we've done with other bargaining units, cash-out provisions for vacation leave that comply with IRS constructive receipt doctrine, where they have to declare in the year prior what they want to sell out in the following year, and it's made in two payments, one in June and one in December. You cannot sell out, you cannot sell back vacation in excess of what you would have earned in that calendar year. We also have in this new contract the force hire one rank down provision, where employees that are rehired, they are only able to work down one rank. So currently, if you are a captain, you are able to work down two ranks, which means you could work down, as a captain, you could work down as a firefighter. This would mean that if you're a captain, you can only work down as an engineer or you can work down as a medic. You would not be able to work two ranks down. And then the last provision that's important to mention is the vacation leave accrual maximum of two years and no additional payments for any amount that would be accrued over the maximum. That would become effective January 1st of 2025. With this item, I have two resolutions, one to approve the MOU itself, but then, as you know, CalPERS requires an amendment, a resolution to approve the extra $50 for the PIMCA amount.
Thank you, Mrs. Reddick. Any questions? Comments? Oh, okay. We've got, City Attorney, if you could read the title, we will then consider adoption.
Mayor and council, a resolution approving and adopting the memorandum of understanding between the City of El Segundo and the El Segundo Firefighter, Firefighters IAAF Local 3682 Bargaining Unit is ready for adoption.
Thank you, sir. Who would like to move approval?
So moved.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Baldino seconds.
Oh, Bill Dino on the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Five zero. Thank you.
There is one more resolution, resolution fixing the employer contribution under the Public Employees Medical and Hospital Care Act at equal amount for employees and annuitants with respect to a reorganized, recognized employee organization. 004 El Segundo Firefighters Association is ready for adoption.
Who would like to move approval? So moved. Thank you. Drew on the first, Perstic on the second. Great. Great. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 5-0. Thank you, Mrs. Reddick.
There was a lot of work. Thank you to the firefighters' association. Thank you to the city staff, the attorneys involved. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to stay up.
Okay, yes.
Next time.
Item 20, changes to the title and classification specification for community cable program specialist and building safety manager and the accompanying resolution establishing basic salary ranges.
Thank you. So this item is basically revisions to the job spec and revisions to the job title for these two positions. The community cable program manager to media specialist, that is a represented position, so I did have to send the job description to the association to see if they wanted to meet and confirm the impacts of the changes. They were in agreement with the changes that were proposed, so that's why I'm able to bring it to you tonight for approval. The building and safety manager to the building official, that is an unrepresented position. It did have significant changes to the job description, which I worked with Director Michael Allen. Both of these, because there is a title change, it, it requires a resolution so that we can be in compliance with CalPERS for the rules on publicly available pay schedules.
Great, thank you. If there are no questions, we can take the first two title changes as one motion. Any questions or comments?
I, I just have a comment, and I just want to thank Human Resources for kind of going through and looking at this aggressively of, even though we've always had this job position, do we still need it? How can we update it so that it fixes what we need right now as a city? And I just want to thank you for putting that effort out there to make sure that we're not just filling positions that are antiquated, but we're continually looking at the level of service we want to provide and what resources do we need from a city to provide those services to our communities? So this is important work that you do, and I'm sure it's grueling to, to go through it all, but I appreciate it.
It, it does take time, but I believe that we should put the time in upfront before we do a recruitment to fill something and then have someone get in the position and it's not what they thought. So, and also the updating of the titles, these are more attractive and they're more, you know, newer terms than community cable program specialist.
Correct.
So, thank you.
Can I echo that? I don't want to belabor it, but there's, there are employees in LA County who cannot get promoted because they cannot type the requisite number of words per minute because they're classified as a typist specialist still. And that's an enormous number of employees. So staying ahead of it is, is not glamorous work, but laudable work. I appreciate it.
The, the building official job description, one of the updates to that was a education and experience alternative for people who, if they've been a building inspector for a long time, they may not have a bachelor's degree, but they will have several certifications that would be equivalent to that. So that is something that we also looked at.
Great. There's nothing further? Would someone like to move approval? Both title changes together as one motion?
Persick, so moved.
Thank you. Give me a second.
Second?
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 5-0. Next up, we have a resolution establishing the basic salary ranges for the media specialist and building official. City attorney, would you please read the title?
Mayor and council, a resolution establishing basic salary ranges for full-time job classifications is ready for adoption.
Both will move approval? Do we have a second?
Second?
Great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 5-0. Thank you, Mrs. Reddick.
Mayor, if I might, on consent agenda, item number nine, that was the item on the downtown specific plan. If the clerk could just note that on those items that the mayor, mayor pro tem abstained like they do when they were introduced because of their conflicts-
Counselor Persick and the mayor.
I'm sorry. Counselor, may I have a Persick and the mayor?
I was outvoted on that one, so that's how I remember. And a power play, shorthanded, two to one.
Got you.
Thank you for clarifying that. Thank you for catching that. Okay, item 21, which is United States Department of Homeland Security, 2023 Urban Area Security Initiatives Grant Program Award and Sub-Award Agreement with the City of Los Angeles. AnI C Chief Sal Rodriguez approaching the podium. Sir.
Good evening again, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and council. So what we're looking forward today is to, for you folks to allow us to accept a grant that we received. We initially applied for this grant in October of 2022. In November of '22, we were approved. December of '23, we were told, you need to start ready to look for the vehicle that you want to, want to select and use. It wasn't until April where they came forward with the actual contract for us to look forward for this approval of the vehicle. The vehicle itself is called a rescue vehicle, MedCat, that could be used for situations in which we believe we are tactically in a disadvantage. God forbid you have a citizen and/or a officer who's been shot. This is the best way we can use to get to that person safely to avoid any further injuries. In addition to that, we've used a vehicle similar to this about 25 times since 2021. This vehicle is going to be the first in the South Bay region, which also has firefighting capabilities. In the event that there is somebody who has a fire and they're in a position of advantage for us, we're going to do everything we can to save lives. That's ultimately what we're trying to do here. Also, this vehicle is currently housed, it's a regional asset that's in Redondo Beach. If we had an immediate situation that we needed this type of vehicle today, right now, it'd take 30 minutes to an hour to get that vehicle here. If we were to purchase this vehicle here, it would be here in our city and we can immediately get to that car and that vehicle and use it in a tactical situation to make sure we render people safe. The money, again, is going to come from the, the grant, which is going to award us roughly $251,000, and the remaining costs, which could range anywhere from $110,000 to $250,000 roughly, would be from our asset forfeiture funds. And that's going to come from the Department of Treasury Asset Forfeiture Funds, which we have already in place. That fund currently has about $500,000 in it. We'd use that money to, to get, to secure the purchase of that vehicle. The other issue is we're dealing with a time crunch, if you will. If we don't accept this grant soon, we're in a time crunch because we need to have that vehicle in hand by January of 2026. The vehicle will take about 10 months to a year to build, so not until we have that vehicle can we say we have it, then we start getting the reimbursements for the actual vehicle itself. Any questions? I'm sure there are a lot.
Uh, yeah, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
What, you mentioned that, I think you said chief, how many times have you used a similar vehicle, and what, what were the circumstances of that situation?
I don't have every situation I can tell you. There was an incident that I've been made aware of that happened on Grand Beach and Center Street. A vehicle of that sort was used and it was necessary. When it's going to be used in the future, that's unpredictable, given the nature of the work that we do. That can be needed today, any, anytime now. So it's used a lot when we're doing search warrant services either in the city or outside the city, or helping our regional assets. It can be used at that particular time.
And in a, like when you, where you came from, Santa Monica, did you guys have one there?
Yes, we did, sir.
Okay, and then what, in the region, given that some of our cities are so small in LA, you have 88 cities in LA County?
Yeah.
How many of these would you expect to have in, like the county of LA, these particular vehicles?
It's hard to say. Sometimes you need multiple similar type of vehicles in an operation.
I guess what I'm getting at is no opportunity to show this with Manhattan Beach or some other neighbor that's in close proximity?
For that, again, this is the only vehicle that's going to have the firefighting capabilities too, and it can be used as an ambulance to, if we need to rescue personnel or even community members who are unsafe, have been injured, this will allow us that capability to do that. Other entities do have it, like I mentioned, there's one in Redondo Beach. My understanding is Manhattan Beach is trying to get one too. But again, you're also going to be looking at the time length it takes for them to get their personnel to get us that vehicle here. This affords us the ability to get that vehicle on scene immediately because of a lot of our SWAT members are embedded within patrol, so we can have that vehicle out there to keep our officers safe and our community safe immediately.
Okay, last question, I think for me is, if you couldn't use the asset forfeiture, forfeiture funds for this, what would be your second favorite or most effective application of those funds to protect our citizens?
Well, again, this was rewarded specifically for this rescue vehicle. If we were not-
The grant side, yeah, I'm talking about just the asset for, because we're, some of the funds we're using are from the asset forfeiture.
Correct.
So when you think about just those dollars, what, next to this, what would be the best use of those funds for-
Um, it's hard to say. Some of that could be the technology stuff we talked about earlier as far as the drone-
But you already have the funds for that.
We do have that. That's already embedded within the money that I'm, I'm already seeing that's there. So other than that, there's not much that I'm looking at at this point.
Okay.
Within understanding what the SWAT team needs right now to keep our community safe, this is one of the things that they said was paramount for us to have.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments, questions, concerns?
I mean, we have significant armored assets, right? We have a Humvee. We spent $300,000 a few years ago on a SWAT vehicle. Is this superfluous? How do we choose which vehicle to use for what?
The Humvee is not adequate to do what we're trying to get to. In other words, there's not enough room should we have somebody we're trying to rescue and you're also trying to do life-saving efforts. You can't do that necessarily in the Humvee, whereas in this MedCat vehicle, the rescue vehicle, there's plenty of room to do that. And as I mentioned, we do have fire department personnel who are medically trained to provide that immediate relief to people to try to save a life.
I mean, I, I don't doubt that it's, it's a good vehicle for its use, but, but we're allocating, and I know most of this is grant money, but, but the other chunk of this is, is our asset forfeiture. These are, are high-impact but low-frequency events. And I think when the mayor was talking about things you could use the money for, if we had used asset forfeiture money toward some of the vehicles we replaced earlier in the year, like the unmarked vehicles we spent a lot of money on, would that have freed up money for some of the technology pieces that we're trying to budget for? So I, I don't, I mean, I'm sure we'll buy this vehicle. I, I don't doubt that we will because we've already gone through the grant process. There's lots of grants out there.
Yes.
I question the wisdom of us going for a exquisite platform like this for scenarios that are vanishingly rare. We have other vehicles that, that, I, I mean, the number of times our officers draw their weapons is mercifully very low.
Sure.
And there are certainly scenarios for this, but they're not scenarios that we're typically going to use in this city. I don't doubt that this will get called for service, but I, I, I almost assure you, when it's called for service, it will be in a mutual aid capacity.
Yeah, I, I understand the, the concern there, but we got to prepare for the unknown. I never know when that's going to be needed. I can refer back to an incident that happened over at the Arc Light Theater where several officers were shot about 10 years ago or more. That vehicle would have been used in that situation. It's unknown when it's going to happen. Unfortunately, in the work that we do, it's, it's never known when it's going to be used, how often it's going to be used, but having the comfort to know that that vehicle is present and available to our officers and to the community brings me the ability to sleep some.
I just think that our funds are best used for the crimes they are going to encounter on a day-to-day basis.
Sure.
And procuring, you know, extra technology assets to, to aid the 72 officers we're trying to hire to stop the shoplifters that continue to overrun the point or to encounter our unhoused guests and residents in the city, those are key things that, this money immediately wouldn't go directly to, right?
Sure.
But you could use this money to fund equipment and then our general fund money could be allocated to it. I know we're going to buy this thing, but I would say that, look, we bought a $330,000 SWAT vehicle a couple of years ago because our old SWAT vehicle was fine, it was weapon rack was the wrong size for our new weapons. And that's the kind of thing that makes a taxpayer want to jump off a bridge. So I, I think that these are the things that, again, I'm sure we'll get this gorgeous vehicle, and during parades, people ask us, why do we have one of those? And we'll say, well, we, we're not stopping any shoplifters at Dick's with it.
Right.
And so I would question, again, the F-35 is a great airplane and it's an exquisite platform. It's, it's not going to beat the Chinese. So these are the sorts of things that, that I would question the wisdom of us applying for in the future.
And, and the other fear is if we were not to follow through with the grant, there's a possibility that we apply for further grants in the future, we will be denied because we basically are forfeiting the grant.
No, of course, of course, no. And I would just say, grants in the future, when we're looking at the, the family of grants that are available, the ones for these sorts of things, again, this thing would, I'm sure it'll roll 25 times a year, and none of those will be for instance in El Segundo, fortunately. That would be my prognostication, but that's all, Mr. Mayor.
And when, when I took a look at this, first question I asked was, okay, it's a half a million dollar vehicle.
Right.
Right? And the grant covers maybe half of it. I don't understand the price tag on all these things. That's, seems like an awful lot. I'm, I'm sure there's a rationale behind it, but my first question was, wha, what is it really going to be used for? And then I'm looking through the staff report and the four things that are mentioned, this is just what I was given, so, was to destroy the rescue vehicle multiple, multiple times a year during large-scale public events as part of a SWAT security reaction team, train with neighboring agencies, train El Segundo PD and El Segundo Fire Department members on the use of the armored rescue vehicle, and provide mutual support to surrounding agencies. So when I look at those four things, it's difficult for me to justify the $206,000 of asset forfeiture, which could be used for something else. I'm struggling with that, that piece of it. If it was, the grant was 258 and the vehicle was 258, have at it. But when I look at this, I'm, I'm questioning what could that $200,000 be used for?
Right.
So that's, that's why I'm struggling with this, chief. I gotta be honest with you.
No, I understand, and, and I don't know if we're going to reach that entire amount. That's just the highest we're asking to go. We may go to 100, 150, I'm not sure exactly. I understand your concerns. I'm preparing for the event, the, God forbid we have an incident where I need this right now, and I don't want to wait an hour to provide the safety to the community and to basically rescue officers and members of the community. Because again, right now, that's what we would have to do or find a way that puts our officers in jeopardy, jeopardy to try to save a life.
Would this replace the Humvee? Would we get that out from-
No, that'll still be there. It'll still be in, in, in use. It's not uncommon to have a Humvee and also this rescue vehicle intact with our SWAT team as well.
Any further discussion? Okay, would someone like to move approval?
Baldino so moves.
Okay, do we have a second?
Persick second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
No. Thank you, chief. Appreciate it.
There's, there's three questions.
Uh, yeah, but if we, we're talking about whether or not we're going to authorize the vehicle. So just to be clear, uh, they're all related to purchasing the vehicle. The first is a subaward agreement with the city of LA to accept the security initiatives grant. Second one is to use the asset forfeiture funds, and the third is to basically execute the documentation to purchase the vehicle. So was, was that clear to everyone that voted?
Oh, you are going to take the 32 vote on all three votes?
Yes.
Correct?
Correct. Adam Clerk.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
It's 32 opposed, just to be clear. Thank you.
You are now.
Yes, I was a no. Yeah, all right. Okay, next, next up, we have the, item 22, proposed couple of work for a general plan, land use element update request for proposals, and Mr. Michael Allen to present.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. This is just a discussion item before you tonight, you know, in light of a, a general plan that has, I think, seven, seven elements to our general plan here, seven that are mandatory by, by state law. One is required to be updated every housing cycle, which is the housing element. The, most recently, the cycles have been eight years or every eight years, seven to eight years. The housing element has to go through its comprehensive update. We've done that. The other six elements are not required to be updated every, every so many years. They are required by state law. They are required to be updated, but there's no timing, there's no regulation on, on what that actually means. But I'll tell you anecdotally is, every, every 20 to 30 years, every city goes through a general plan update. Sometimes they do element by element, and sometimes they do comprehensive general plan updates, updating all elements at the same time. The general plan in, in, in overall sort of broad conversation essentially sets the blueprint for the city. It's a sort of technical planning jargon. We always tell people it's the blueprint of the city. It's a industry, industry sort of, you know, term that, that makes sense to us. It lays out what our vision is for the community from an open space standpoint, for a public safety standpoint, conservation or environmental standpoint and land use standpoint, economical standpoint. So the, the land use element alone focuses on what it's described as, as, as land use and economics. What I'm, what I'm proposing tonight is something that we've talked about briefly during the strategic planning sessions the last couple of years, is updating specifically the land use element by itself. The land use element was the last updated in 1992. It's had probably two or so dozen updates to it throughout the years, the last 30 or so years has been updated a couple dozen times, incremental changes over time. There's also been zoning code updates and zoning map amendments that have resulted in general plan map amendments and, and general plan updates as well. All of these things have resulted in sort of a, a fabric of, of zones and overlays and, and different regulations and, and sort of, if you look at just the northeast quadrant of, of the city, that is east of PCH, north of, of El Segundo, there's almost eight or nine different regulate, regulatory standards depending on where you're at in that one square mile. There's nothing wrong with that. The patchwork is sort of what's made El Segundo very unique. We've been very responsive to industry needs, but it's sort of time, it's, it's been 30 years, it's time that we kind of weave that, weave that into a, a new quilt, you know, for lack of a better, better term. Look at the standards, evaluate what makes sense across the, across the board and that is, you know, citywide. The, the land use element really sets, sets at a very high level, sets standards for population density, land use patterns, environmental impacts and overall sort of the built environment or what we want the built environment to look like. So tonight I have a sort of, an outline of a very typical land use element update and, and want to make sure that before we put out a request for proposals, we're capturing the information, the analysis, the study that this council would want to include in a land use element update. And so typically a land use element update consists of background, background analysis or background studies, so summary of existing conditions, looks at demographics, economic data, land use trends. This, this information is used as a, as a baseline to evaluate all proposed alternatives to evaluate impacts. And so it looks at existing conditions against the proposed development patterns, proposed land uses and uses that to, to evaluate what the potential environmental impact, growth trends might be from, from the baseline data. The, the more technical analysis, which would ends up being most of the meat of the update, includes, you know, economic market conditions, regulatory conditions that sort of either create stagnated growth or that what, what might actually facilitate growth and then potential additional partnerships that may, you know, occur through private-public relationships or how we can incentivize public investments and, and private infra, or public, private investments into public infrastructure. And, and really the focus, what I, I think would be the, the genesis of, of our, our update would be looking at land use east of PCH and looking at the, the economic development impact and opportunities east of PCH, prioritizing what, what our community would like to see there from a standpoint of a commercial, commercial development. What we want to know is how do we continue to incentivize and ensure that, that tax-generating uses, land uses and, and business types are, are incentivized to locate, invest, build east of PCH in lieu of other uses that may not be as desirable for, for our community. Additionally, land use alternatives is, is a important section of the, the general plan update. And this is where, you know, consultant team would prepare depending on the, the community engagement and the study sessions with commission and council, several different alternative land use proposals from a zoning standpoint, policy standpoint, that, that would have to be considered. This could also include, as I mentioned, maybe simplifying and consolidating the land use regulations from the array of, of overlays and, and zones that are particularly on east of PCH. Other sort of regulatory components that are part of traditional scope of work, an EIR or environmental impact report, there would be countless hearings and meetings, community meetings, workshops, seminars throughout the process, as well as a recommendations to ensure that the new land use element is, is consistent with the zoning code. And what frequently happens, our zoning code is also very old and it's been updated several times, almost, and, you know, every year we, we bring zoning code text amendments to the council. So what, what the, the land use element study would do, it would help advise us on how do we get the zoning code up to be in alignment with whatever the new land use element ends up being at that time. In some cases, they will do both at the same time.
Question on the EIR trigger, is that anytime you do a general plan update or is that if a zoning change is happening?
It will, it would be anytime we do a general plan update. The scale of the EIR would be different depending on how much you're actually updating. And I'll say, tell you, a, a general plan land use element and then, and from 1992 needs a, a complete whole, you know, whole refresh, whole new EIR. But the scope of that will really depend on how many changes we're, we're really making. But it will be a full EIR. But it's a good opportunity. A lot of, a lot of cities use it as a mechanism to essentially pre-entitle or pre-evaluate potential development growth down the road. And so if you can evaluate density and, and floor area up on the front end, it makes the entitlement process or makes the development process on the back end far more efficient. Lastly, just a sort of a very rough roadmap, you know, we're talking about anywhere between 18 to 24 month process just for the land use element update. And so just to sort of give you some perspective of this is not something that happens overnight. It's a significant investment in time and, and resources. The community development department does charge a surcharge fee at the counter for every permit that's issued, which funds a fund balance specifically for the general plan update in general. So we can use it for the land use element, we use it for the housing element, we've used it for the updates to the downtown specific plan and the Smoky Hollow specific plan. So we have a dedicated funding source to, to fund this. What we don't know is exactly how much it will cost. And I'll tell you, just on a rough survey, it's a very wide range of, of costs. There is no apples-to-apples comparison on a land use or general plan update. Every city is different, every scope is slightly different, every, every scale of update is different, and so it's, it's not a good apples-to-apples comparison. But just to give you a range, you know, you have a very small update from Baldwin Park, you know, four years ago, which cost them a couple hundred thousand dollars versus a, you know, also around the same time in Woldemar, not a very big city, but 1.3 million dollars, which was probably a much more comprehensive update. So it's a very wide range. I would guess what we would ballpark is for our update would probably be, especially based on what we spent on the downtown specific plan and housing element, I would guess our down, our, our land use element update would cost anywhere between 500,000 to 800,000. So we've earmarked 800,000. We have well over a million dollars in the dedicated funding source, but it's something that, that staff believes we need to do. It's important, particularly in a time when it's difficult to tenant office space, we're not sure what future land uses may, may want to locate, you know, east of PCH. We're not sure if the built environment currently supports what, what the growth trends could be in the future. You know, it's important to look at that and ensure that we are continuously providing a framework that allows businesses to, to come to El Segundo and, and locate here and, and invest here and build here and continue to support what, what generates, you know, what, what generates the most of the revenue for the city, which is the, the business tax revenue. And so the, the emphasis on the land use element would be citywide, but the emphasis specifically of the study would, would be on east of PCH. Now, we would include everything west of PCH, but I, we're probably pretty content with where we're at west of PCH. So I think that the focus would primarily be east of PCH. With that, it's, it's really just an open discussion. I want to make sure I capture if there's analysis or study or components that the, the council wants to include in the proposal. Our goal would be to ask consultants to structure it in a way where they give you, give us a, a menu of options and the associated costs so that when we come back, we can provide those menu of options of analysis and study beyond the standard scope of work that we can pick and choose from to make sure we stay in the price range that we, we envision. So with that, I, I'm happy to answer any questions. Stayed pretty high level and so we can get in the weeds of any components if you need to, but really just looking for, for feedback before we issue an RFP.
Good question. You mentioned economic input, I think somewhere in your presentation. To, to how, to what extent do they really dig into the regional ecosystem of business and what are, what we should be emphasizing on economic development side or how we can, you know, we had someone come to us recently with the idea of a brain park, for example, and is neuroscience something we want to focus on? So does it incorporate industry opportunities as well or is it more, can you give us, I've never gone through this process.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's, it's usually very localized, but if we wanted to do a, a broader analysis, you know, we, we can build that in. But it will, it will and can look at industry specific, you know, if there were specific industries we wanted to look at or if we wanted to pose the question, you know, tell us what industries can and should be facilitated here and the economic impact of, of that. We, we can certainly pose that question.
Thank you. So, so the idea that too, like we just had a startup just had a significant raise and having a hard time finding 10 to 20,000 square feet that's built with the infrastructure that he needs to be able to create a maker space. So it would incorporate those kind of challenges as well, I'm sure, right?
Yeah, we can look at barriers to entry, you know, whether it's things that we can control, like land use regulations or things that we don't have a whole lot of control over, like power from SCE. You know, we've had scenarios where, you know, tenants are, they want to come in, but they require a, a panel upgrade that SCE cannot facilitate due to the infrastructure that's currently there. And the cost to provide the infrastructure is way beyond the means of a single tenant. And so they can, you know, we can ask for, you know, information on barriers to entry of, of a wide spectrum of, of issues.
Okay, any other comments, questions?
Yeah, a couple. The, the general plan is so important because it's really one of the last tools a city has to maintain what local control we still can have from the state. And I'll give you one example, the environmental impact reports were weakened during this whole housing push to where we no longer able in an environmental impact report, look at loss of use on intersections to determine if this building goes in and there's 1,000 employees, how is that going to affect how much time, you know, a citizen has to sit at the intersection before they can make that light? They changed that to something they're calling vehicle miles traveled, which is a hypothetical amount of what we're going to assume, how far one person who works at this office that hasn't been built, who we don't know who the tenant is, how far are they going to drive? How many stops are they going to make? I have been told and I believe that if we still maintain something as loss of service in our general plan, then we can use that. If the environmental impact report comes back and says, hey, based on vehicle miles traveled, there's going to be no impact, there's, it's fine. We can still do an analysis under our general plan of loss of service, that old school system, which is, you know, quantitatively and quantitatively verifiable as opposed to vehicle miles traveled. So it, it helps gain local control, but it also allows us, as, as you said, Mr. Allen, to kind of take the burden of these companies that want to come in and do something different with an office building in a commercial respect, to do some work for them so that it's cheaper and they're not coming with us with either a development agreement or a huge blown-out proposal. We can kind of workshop this through our corporate citizens to find out, you know, what is it that's working, what's not working, what needs to change? And then once we develop this general plan, hopefully it attracts more businesses. Hopefully it makes entry easier. But it also provides us as a local body, some form of control of this is what we think El Segundo should look like going forward. So it's important work, it's, it's grueling work, but I think it's very worthwhile.
Thank you, sir. Would you like to move approval?
I would love to move approval.
Baldino with the first?
First, second.
Great. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five zero. Thank you, Mr. Allen. I think we're, I think we're done with our normal business. Right, we jumped around a little bit. Okay, City Clerk reports.
Yeah, can I get clarification on item 19? The vote? Because I have Pimentel, Perstuck and Baldino as yes and Giroux and Boils as no.
I don't think it's, I don't think it's 19, it's not 19, I think you're 21.
Sorry, 21.
Three opposed, me, Pimentel and Giroux.
Yes, I know, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification.
Any, anything else, City Clerk? Reports?
Uh, no, just if anyone's interested, um, it's an election year, nominations will begin in July and run through August 9th.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
City Treasurer, any reps here? No. Okay, Councilmember Baldino.
Yeah, I attended the Aquatics Subcommittee and I want to report that the council's decision to increase the lifeguard compensation has had an immediate result to where they're saying they're not only having easier time staffing, but some lifeguards who weren't on the schedule are calling to get back on. So that's some positive news that we got there and that's all I have. Thank you.
Good news indeed. Thank you. Councilmember Drew. Uh, nothing from me this evening. Thank you. Councilmember Perstuck.
Yeah, so myself and Councilmember Drew attended the Finance Committee. One of the things we've asked them to look at is now that we've been, we've instituted the new business license, one, we asked them to look at year-over-year headcount FTEs or for each company because we wanted to see if there's been a dip year-over-year coming out of COVID to see what that is, how that has changed. So the Finance Committee, the Finance Department's going to come back to us to look at year-over-year, like over a period of time, what the, the headcount is by companies to see if there's been a change, dramatic change. Because as, I'm just to make, to everyone aware, that is a component of the calculation of their fee, so we wanted to understand that. The other thing we asked them to do was look at developing a, reaching out to the businesses that have shared, shared office space and do some type of, create some kind of streamlined onboarding for developing, to, to obtaining an El Segundo business license because we're concerned that some of these businesses may not actually obtain the business license and we want to make sure everyone's following the rules. And so they're going to reach out to the, the main work, work share businesses to develop some type of process to streamline and the onboarding process of obtaining a business license. And then last but not least, I've asked the Fire Department to give me a list of their call logs to all the hotels to see if there's any hotels that are overusing our services. So I will be asking the Police Department to provide that as well with a number of units so we can determine if there's any, anybody that's overusing the services or, and if there is, if there's some communication we can have with them to, you know, just to try to manage that appropriately. That's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Perstuck. Mayor Proton, Pimentel.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, on the transportation side, there will be a special workshop next month about an Inglewood proposal to allocate cog, more cog funding to their train that will run from the stadium to the Blue Line, or excuse me, to the Crenshaw Line, the K Line. That is an enormous amount of money and I think that there will be a lot of interest in the region for that. So that'll be a, a special meeting at the beginning of June, second Monday of June. Sanitation on the county side, they are braced for eventual cost, significant cost increases on the county side. So that's for our, our businesses east of PCH. That's not something that, that we're involved in the billing for, but that will certainly have an impact on them. That could be as much as 10% for three consecutive years, which would be a lot. Other than that, yesterday attended the Sidebar Summit, talked to the Microsoft and Google Corporate Venture Capital to, to ask a bit about how they approach El Segundo and it was interesting to find out that, that they don't. They are averse to capital-intensive startup programs and that's why they've retrenched quite a bit, even in Los Angeles. And they're content to let some of the more adventurous venture capital and, and the U.S. government get involved in the business space here, which I thought was pretty interesting because you just tend to think of like, hey, if you're a $2 trillion company, you know, you're afraid to, afraid to start something in El Segundo, like, well, it's just not, it's not in their business model on, on, on how they achieve financial results. But other than that, nothing further.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. Yeah, just want to compliment the Economic Development slash Communications Team. Great progress getting that L.A. Business Journal article that was really well done. Great press for us, front, front cover with one of our companies here in town. Really highlights all the activity here with the $363 million in venture funding in 2023 alone in El Segundo Companies, which is a significant departure from the past year with all this venture funding. And then I, I want to put something on a future agenda, Mr. City Manager, which is we're spending a lot of time, effort and money on an ERP system. And years ago, when we first got in council, there was a Technology Subcommittee and that was created because there's a void in that, and I'm not suggesting there's a void. We are spending, I think I heard it's close to $1 million or $750,000. I'd like to suggest a Subcommittee of Two Council Members to just be involved in that ERP initially. Shouldn't last long, but just to vet that, be involved in the decision going forward. Some of us have expertise there, myself included, so I'd like to be on that Subcommittee. And I really think we got to put that on a future agenda. Thank you. City Attorney.
Briefly, at the next agenda, we placed an item on the agenda for the council to have a discussion about the possibility of putting a measure on in November for the city to become a charter city. While Sacramento has whittled away quite a bit at the advantages of being a charter city, there's been a recent case ruling that if it stands through the appellate process, would return some of the local control to government as far as some of the housing regulations that we've seen over the course of the last five to eight years. So we'll bring that forward and the council would chart of what the limited advantages are of being a charter city, probably very little disadvantage to being one. But any of that, we'll bring forward that to the council for some, a look at that at the next meeting.
When can we expect the whole grant pass thing to be weighed in on and evolved and, and decided upon? Supreme Court, right, Supreme?
Uh, soon, you know, I, I'll, I'll, I'll look and, and report on that too. I, a bunch of opinions are going to come out here over, you know, I don't know if they've, they've set a specific date for that, but it, it should be soon.
Okay, a lot of people are really waiting on that one. Thank you for that.
Yes, they are.
Okay, City Manager?
Yes, uh, Mayor, just a, a couple quick, uh, short, I, uh, report on Hyperion. Um, we continue to stay in touch with the Mayor Bass's office on the new position that they've created over at Hyperion. Still have not had the opportunity to sit down with the recruiter that will be, uh, filling that, that position for the division, uh, manager. So, but we're still in communication, just, just a slow process. Um, as far as AQMD, there were no additional NOVs over the last two weeks, and they're still processing the evaluation of the, the failures that they had of the digester leaks back in April. Still have, still awaiting that report. And then also, they are still on target to hit the deadline of June 6th to replace the primary tank covers for that, that Battery D location. So, they're still on target for that.
Do you know that there was that one consideration they were gonna put before the budget committee in L.A. City about restructuring their organization and allocating some funds to do so? Do you know if they've made any progress on that, or if they weighed in on that?
Um, I don't, I don't know.
Can you find out for the next meeting, please?
We'll find out about that, yes.
Because they, they were talking that that was going to be a significant contributor to success going forward, but we haven't heard any updates on that.
No. And then, uh, just final item and, and follow-up, Mayor, to your compliments on getting that front-page article in the Business Journal. Um, the, the, the Business Journal also has nominated our deputy city manager as a final candidate for woman of the, businesswoman of the year. So...
Whoa, that's awesome.
I know. So we will, uh, I think there's a lunch next month.
What do we need to do to influence that? Can we, I mean, matter, no?
I don't know. If we know anyone at the Business Journal higher-ups, but congratulations, Barbara, and we're looking forward to your lunch, and we'll keep our fingers crossed.
Awesome. Great press for the city and for you. Congratulations. It's great. Well deserved.
That's it, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Uh, we are, I think I covered everyone. Yeah, we're adjourned. Thank you.